Let's go ahead and good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to our strategic planning meeting for August 2nd. Can I get approval for our minutes? Do have an approval for the minutes. I do hear a second without any objection, the minutes will stand. Today, I would like to start us off with welcoming Madam Vice Chair Dotley. Welcome, Madam Vice Chair. We have a special election dates and locations. And to give you some context as to why this is in your packet is I talked to Mr. Allen at the Election Commission in anticipation of what could be after this Thursday, and I wanted to make sure counsel had all the information as the Election Commission has laid out in their anticipated plan if if the need arises. So I had Nicole place this into your packet. And if you'll notice, a couple of dates, the election date would be on the September 15th, excuse me. Early voting would be held in District 8 at the Hamilton County Election Commission Office. And early voting at that location. And you can see where the polling places will be in District 8. Take a look at these times, dates. If there's anything that gives you pause or concern, now would be a time to let me know. You can also let me know within the week, and I can address those via email and get back to Mr. Allen with any concerns. But I want to make sure you all have this and if there was and give counsel an opportunity to look at any information that might be pertinent to the runoff election if it is required. So, Madam Vice Chair, I see your light.
I did have a question about the election day polling places. A couple of these are because this is a city District 8, right?
It is.
Okay. So a couple of the polling places, the Alton Park one, of course, is District 7. Dogwood Manor is District 7. The Eastlake Senior Center is also District 7. So I just wanted to make sure that that was noted, that those three locations are District 7 locations.
Tell me those one more time. Avondale, Dogwood Manor.
Yeah, Alton Park, downtown one, the Dogwood Manor, and Eastlake Senior Center.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good. I appreciate that. And I will get with Mr. Allen unless unless Mr. Knobit has anything that you're good on that.
No, that's fine. Do you wish me to talk to him?
No, I don't mind. I'll follow up on it. I've had we've had some good conversation, been a great education piece for me as well during the whole process. So I'll bring those up and I'll just send I tell you what, I'll send an email out to everyone what the answer is. So that we're all clear.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks for bringing that up. Councilwoman Coonrod?
Thank you, Chair. I could answer it as well. The Alton Park precinct, like the people that live like in Brandon Avenue and Cannon, so pretty much that Clifton Hills area, they're routing them to go vote at Alton Park. And then the people, Dogwood, like say, from that area, Dogwood Manor, they're going to be routing people from so it's different communities that's been rerouted to those areas since precincts had closed.
Okay.
But you can get a more formal.
And that makes that makes a lot of sense. I appreciate you helping clarify that. None of this is set in stony. They still have to meet and vote on it as an election commission, but I want to make sure we address this now to see if there's any concerns. And I think we're I'll get you an answer and finalize that, but I thank you for.
Well, one more thing that I are they just going to have one early voting location?
Yes, and that would be the and the reason Mr. Allen told me was because their data has shown that is where most everybody goes to vote because it's in District 8.
Okay.
Yeah, we I didn't I did pose that question because I thought the same thing. But he said. This is only applies, yes, ma'am, if there's a runoff. Yeah. Okay. All right. Very good. So you have that. I'll follow up on those locations, and I do appreciate that chime in, Councilwoman Coonrod, as well. Moving on to other business, we have a public hearing on the Area 11 Plan scheduled for 8/23, even though we won't vote on it for a little while after there's some timeframes with the state that we need to make sure we're covered. Madam Chair, do you have anything of planning zoning you'd like to add to that?
Yeah, it's a there are a lot of time time sensitive things that we have to do related to a public hearing, but we're going to go ahead and get a intro into the Area 11 Plan at today's planning and zoning meeting so that then people can know what they're looking at when they get the document later today.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. McTravers, I think, is going to present that today is what I understand. So always good to hear things ahead of time instead of the last minute, right? Okay. Dr. Burz, I think you have a plan of action to address the noise ordinance. If you want to hit your light for me and bring us a little bit up to date.
I'll be meeting with Phil and addressing the areas. They're mostly residential issues. The plan hasn't been looked at in a number of years. And I guess what we're going to be concentrating on mainly is residential areas, noise in residential areas, because the footprint of residential areas has changed, and the law is irrelevant now. So if any of you have issues in your residential areas that you want us to look at, let me know, and Phil and I will be meeting within the next few weeks.
And I'm assuming when you say the footprint means it's gotten smaller with more people in it.
Well, yeah, you've got antiquated things like if if I'm having noise from my neighbor and it's very neighborhoods have gotten smaller. The law right now says if an officer can hear it 300 yards away, well, as I said, that would be in the next neighborhood. I mean, it's just it doesn't make any sense anymore.
Sure.
In my district, and I would assume in other, well, I know at least one other district, there have been complaints about noise, and we don't have anything to address that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And to reiterate your point, my neighborhood, 300 feet will probably hit you 10 houses or more.
That's right. And and it's just it's just irrelevant now. So we're going to be looking at it.
Okay, thank you. And I'll look forward to your update. When you're ready, let me know. But I'm going to leave it on here if that's okay.
Yes, sir.
Because I think it's.
Please do.
Please, thank you. Under pending presentation, oh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Hill, I see your light.
Thank you. Councilwoman Burz, I'm I just want to let you know I'd be happy to be your second on that noise ordinance work. Our residential areas in District 2 nestle along a major thoroughfare, that being Hickson Pike and some of our adjacent roads through neighborhoods. We suffer tremendously from really loud motorcycles and loud cars racing. And we've had some folks from District 2 leading conversations with the police department looking for new enforcement tools. So please tap me whenever you need me. I'm happy to help in any way I can.
I've already made a note of that.
Oh, great. You've been hearing me.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm certain it extends on into District 3. Yeah, thank you.
I'm sorry, we didn't quite get that for the record, Councilwoman Hill. Can you do that again? Think we do we get that back there? So let me remind you, strategic planning, normally, we meet in the conference room, and it is a little more informal. So I really do welcome the dialogue, a little bit of discussion like this. And well, I'm glad you brought that up. Our rules actually state that we are to be in the conference room for strategic planning. And I and it's a good time to bring it up. I wouldn't mind taking the temperature of counsel to see if we would like to move back there. This is meant to be an informal session. It's meant to be a little more intimate. We get a lot done, and we have a lot of honest conversations, I think, when we're able to just speak at the table instead of in this format. So if, well, if there's no objection, maybe our next strategic planning, we'll move back to back to the conference room. And the reason we obviously are here was for COVID reasons, but I think, given the amount of people that are in the room, and I do appreciate the conversation. So there's no objection. Madam Clerk, will you make that note? We'll actually go back to what our rules state.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And I do have a lot of lights. See, we could just talk around the table. Who's next? Councilwoman Coonrod, I see you.
Thank you, Chair. Councilwoman Burz, would a noise ordinance address like the fireworks? That's my biggest complaint is just fireworks.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Councilwoman Noel?
Yes. Would it address the college students, the frat houses, pottering? Yes, because that's that's the main complaint in my neighborhood. They are they are complaining every meeting that is three houses there that is really.
It currently does not regulate toga parties, but it would deal with the noise that comes from them.
The noise, yes. You know, my neighbors, we are elderly, we're we're aging neighborhood.
Chime in. I got Chip, hit your light again in just a second.
The things that I so I've already talked with the police about it. And one of the problems with the noise ordinance is enforceability. It's not written so that it's enforceable. They they're supposed to carry these little meters with which is dumb. I mean, noise is noise, right? And it it irritates quiet enjoyment, which is a basic right. And so we just need to think it through a little more sophisticatedly. And yes, it addresses that. It addresses it already addresses fireworks. It's just what are you going to do? Because in my neighborhood, there were fireworks for weeks, June 10th to the 4th of July and all of them. And particularly in the environment we're in now, people get scared. They think, oh, my God, somebody just got shot. I mean, it's just dumb stuff. So we're going to try and tighten it up and try and think it through and bring you guys a draft, and then please wordsmith it. But let us get a first draft out. Thank you, sir.
District 4, I think, celebrates for about a week, too. Councilman Henderson?
Thank you, sir. And that was one of the main topics. Somebody caught my attention when they asked about the fireworks because out in our neck of the woods, I mean, we enjoy fireworks. And I don't get any complaint. I will get complaints if we do away with them. I would hope and I would like to see what it says about tightening them up so that hopefully we can at least still enjoy them to some degree. The other thing, and I'm not sure you mentioned, Councilwoman Burz, the meters. I think we only have one noise meter in the whole city. So and I think I think a noise ordinance, I believe, Mr. Turney has to be tied somewhat to a decimal level. So in order to regulate that, I think it'll have budgetary implications as well. We're certainly going to have to have more than one meter. Well, and if it doesn't, that's I just well, and we were talking about loud motorcycles earlier, and there had been a some correspondence in between District 1 and District 2 constituents, especially over the North Shore, about motorcycles racing up and down Frazier and other places. And Heather Williams was involved in that. They've ordered some kind of special equipment, you know, to try to help detect and how to curb that. But I think they are quite expensive, but they do need them, it's my understanding, in order to be able to enforce some of these things. So I think as we look at this, we we need to look at possibly what?
Budgetary.
Budgetary implications and see what we need to do to get them the equipment that they need to enforce this stuff.
You currently have some stuff that talks about levels that you need a meter for, but not normal neighborhood type issues. I think you can probably deal with that a little bit differently than the level. The problem is with amplifying devices and noise in the downtown area, that was the reason we went to those decimal levels. But we'll we'll work on it and see what we can we can do that's reasonable. It's also got to be something other than just subjectively where one person says it's too loud and everybody else would not. So we'll work on it.
You're welcome. You good, Councilman?
Yeah.
All right. I do look forward to us returning back to the conference room because, well, we want dialogue, and it's just easier to do this. Any other items you'd like to discuss before we move into pending presentations and I ask some questions of staff? Seeing none, I'm just going to run down these real quickly with you, Joda and others. We're still on deck for a 10-4 strategic planning for the library transition, sir.
Okay. Yes, sir.
All right. And on 8/16, Mr. Goldberg and I did land on that date for the purchasing process update.
That's right.
Okay. And also on 10-4, results of the RFP evaluation. I'm thinking those two are going to probably roll in together with Brent's presentation.
I anticipate so, yes.
Okay. And then are we still on the violence prevention presentation? I do not have a date here. Do we need to?
Yeah, I'm happy to now that we have our gun violence, our roadmap to end gun violence published and and we have wrapped up what we think is a framework to start with, we would love to come to counsel at your leisure and and walk you through that plan.
If you and I can get together and maybe pick a few dates.
Yeah.
I would really like to give that time and attention. So Nicole, we've done this with a recent presentation in Councilwoman Noel's committee. If we could, if you don't mind, will you look at a next really light day committee-wise? Because I want to make sure Dr. Lambert has all the time she needs. And then we'll correspond and find that date.
Sounds great.
Is that going to be in committee or public safety?
We can do it in public safety if 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 Councilman Henderson will be amenable to that.
Yeah, he yeah, he's good with it, right?
Whatever you sign me up for.
Be violent. I I I understand. I understand. I understand. It's well, we are, like I said, we're a little more informal in strategic planning. So the violence prevention presentation, I have Councilwoman Coonrod and Dr. Lambert's name next to it, but would you like to have that in a public safety committee?
Absolutely.
Okay. Nicole, same request applies. If you would, please find us a date that we are light, and let's let's try to give that as much time as possible. I don't want to put that like a planning and zoning day or anything. Okay. We'll work that out. Councilman, we'll get you in on the the date loop. Seeing no future legislation sessions, so we will let me skip over. We do have committee and planning and zoning this afternoon, and then we have a presentation. Dr. Burz, I'm sorry, I apologize. Councilwoman Coonrod, your light's been on, I think, for a second or two.
Thank you, Chair. I was just going to remind you about the economic development presentation on workforce development supposed to be scheduled for August 16th.
And I appreciate you reminding us of that. Did you get that, Nicole? Okay, can we make sure that's on and that is on the 16th? Thank you for that.
Thanks.
Okay, we'll make sure that's added in, Nicole. Dr. Burz, will you hit your light and talk a little bit about tonight's presentation? We'll talk about it at 3:30 again, but.
Okay, I'm on.
Yes, ma'am.
So behind the scenes, I've been working with the black police officers on various programs that that they're coming up with. And it came to mind when we were reviewing all the ARP programs, working with kids, that our own black police officers, and it's turned out the black firefighters, too, have been doing some really neat stuff with kids that we don't know about. And they're doing it just because they're neat men and women. And so when they were at my office, well, I guess it's two weeks ago now, I said, you know what, counsel needs to know the neat things you're doing and what your plans are and and because we need to be proud of the neat things our police officers are doing. And they said, oh, boy, we'd really love that. And so I asked you, Mr. Chair, if you would set us up for them to make their presentation. And they sent asked that they send a number of pictures to Nicole, and we'll have pictures to go with it. They're not asking for anything. I just think they need applause for what they're doing. The first one was the three-on-three at Avondale Center. This Saturday is going to be a back-to-school at Shepherd Center. And then they're they've got plans. We're working to every month do something in a different part of town and where kids need help and need to work with police officers in different ways. And so any of your ideas would be great. We went way out. We talked about, you know, there's always drag racing and on motorcycles and cars and and, you know, kids get in trouble. And so why couldn't the police and the police department did this a while back? Why couldn't they sponsor a drag car or a drag motorcycle and let the kids race at the Optimist Drag Strip? In other words, take whatever the energy is that's getting them in trouble at times and turn it to really neat things. The kids I've worked with in Shepherd are really bright. They they really are neat people. And and so that's what we're working on. And and so I thought maybe we'd give you a heads up, and some of you could also chime in or meet with them or I mean, no idea. We need to think outside the box because the kids do. And so we ought to be on board coming up with things that they can do in our areas or whatever. I mean, all of you are work with kids and are neat people. So anyway, tonight, all that's all that's going to happen is they're going to present what they've done and what they're going to do, and and that's it. And and thank you for listening to them. I mean, there's there's no agenda. I just thought they ought to they ought to get credit. So thank you very much, and thank you, Nicole.
So when Dr. Burz had approached me, and I do see your light, Councilwoman Noel, about the reporting on this, I did think about public safety. But then, as we started to discuss, I thought, well, you know, we're going to get a lot more attention about the good things that happened in this city. It should be at 6 o'clock when more people are in the audience and people need to hear more. I just think it's it's better on this to promote and show and build upon. And I think that a presentation at 6:00 was a better place to do this. And I hope to do actually quite a few more on many levels in a presentation because I think it has more impact. And I know we talk about that word quite a bit, but I'm really looking for good. And I think it's a great opportunity. Councilwoman Noel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I apologize if may I go back up to noise ordinance for just two seconds?
Yes, ma'am, of course. This is.
Does that include the railway noise? Because that's a that's a major. That's a major.
We could all probably answer that, but go ahead, Dr. Burz. Uh huh. That's what I was going to say. Good luck with that. But you're right, yeah.
Because the Riverside neighborhood is forever, forever having to deal with that major for them, so.
That's that's.
Can we not lock hands and go together?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Thanks for keeping that out front. Keeping that out front. So that's our agenda for 8/2 today. On the 9th, we do Parks and Public Works Committee Meeting and Equity and Community Development Meeting. I had the list for all board appointments, and I don't think Chris is in the room, is he? But Joda, I had all the vacancies put on here, and I think that kind of act as a roadmap to help us out. And Ronald, you did send my request, and I've heard from others on the dais that we needed to know that information on the Head Start Governing Board. So thank you because I'm meeting with someone in my district on Thursday, and now I know what to tell them to kind of expect. So that was one item on line item number five. You'll see that it's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9, but I believe 1 has already appointed Councilman Henderson's district. But now he can tell them what they've gotten into, so I hope you don't hope you don't lose them.
And I did just want to say, you know, I think as you all are going through each of these board appointments, if you need support for helping describe the board, our team can help certainly do that. But I did want to put a plug in specifically for these community advisory committees. As you've seen, these are going to be extremely valuable, and we will be sending a slate or rather a round of appointees that we have of folks who have already applied that, you know, we we are excited about, but I think are getting those posted on 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 the agenda because getting these boards functional is extremely important. So just wanted to absolutely underline that and say that we're here to help as as much as possible.
Thank you, Chief. And I know that under the work of Mr. Anderson and overseeing boards, this council's taken boards and commissions, I think, to a different level. We definitely think about it, and finding folks is harder to find at times to nominate and to serve because it does take time. So I'm glad that we're I'm glad that we're kind of kicked this up on the level of importance and awareness for how important the boards and commissions are. So thank you for that. Anything else you need to add? I do have a couple of lights. I have three. Councilwoman Burz, is that a new light or an old light? Go ahead, please.
So Ronald, for the Stanford Gap region, that's the the REC Centers, right? The community centers? The Stanford Gap Region Community Advisory Committee?
Yes, ma'am.
I need four seats?
Yes, ma'am. So how the board is broken down, there are nine people to each board. You know, we gave a lot of thought about what was appropriate amount to make sure we have sufficient community input. And so four of those appointments are given to council. And for those regions that are split amongst council districts, we allocate them appropriately.
Okay.
And so they are housed at each one of our community centers.
Okay, so I'd need two for Tyner and two for Shepherd. Would you send me the name of the lady that was on the YFD Advisory Board?
Yes, ma'am.
You have her name?
Yes, ma'am.
And I don't want to unappoint her. I just want to.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you so much.
Ronald, I have a quick question, and I have two other light, three other lights now. For example, when I read line item 12, Dodson Region Community Advisory Committee, I see District 8 needed two seats. Is the assignment for District 8 to find two people? Make sure I'm clear.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Who is next in line? Councilman Henderson, please.
So on the Health, Education, and Housing Board, it says two seats. Says District 1, 3, and 8 needed. Is this the board that we're still appointing as a group?
That we move to all nine?
Yeah, the the difference is it started out as a seven-member board, and y'all were appointing by groups initially.
Yeah.
At this point in time, you now have a nine-member board that has been increased, but we still only have seven members. So we need to have someone appointed from those districts at least that are needed in there.
But you only need two appointments from one of the three districts.
Correct. Two of the three, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, two of the three, I'm sorry.
So one of these cannot have a appointment and the other two, whichever they are.
So so that mean does that mean that some district has two appointments?
Yes, sir. And based upon y'all's previous methods of appointment, we can get you a list of everybody that's there if you want to look at that list.
Okay.
Yeah.
So Ms. Chair, how are we going to determine which district gets left out of that? I know where you're going. I know that question was I could see it in your eyes, sir, after six years of sitting by you.
And it's the same distance district involved, I guess, with the IDB as well. It may be different districts involved, but we need two more people, and it's because y'all have increased the number up to nine. So both the HEB and the IDB are now nine-member boards to give everyone an opportunity.
Same situation, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
Collegial discussion.
Collegial discussion.
Oh, I thought you said Ouija discussion. I thought it was going to break out the Ouija.
Okay. Any other? Any other questions on board appointments? I'm going to ask, Nicole, we keep this on here because I think it's a great, not only a reminder, conversation piece, but I, so as we move through more questions. Councilwoman Hill, I see you are next.
Thank you. So Chairman, you made the point about how this body has, is working hard to be really thoughtful about our, our board appointments. And, you know, part of that is trying to look beyond just sort of the usual suspects. And as we do that, it occurs to me that the city hopefully is, is bringing in a mindset of how, how do we make this so that the most people can participate? And how do we appreciate people for their time? So for example, these community advisory committees that, are they going to meet in the evenings?
So for each committee, once they're established, we're going to try to find times to work for each one of those members.
Okay.
So they will meet monthly, but it's going to be completely flexible as when they meet.
Okay. All right, great. Because as we try to get young people, people of, of color, people of all different socioeconomic backgrounds, you know, we just, people need flexibility. Can't always be at, at 10:00 AM. The other thing is, and I've expressed this already to the chairman related to a board that I sit on, on behalf of this body, but we need to treat our volunteers well. Like, they definitely deserve access to a bathroom. They deserve access to water. And I would, I, I definitely learned in Leadership Chattanooga that snacks make people happy. And sharing food is a good thing. So just some thoughts that, you know, if they're going to give you two hours of their Thursday once a month, let's put some Ring Pops on the table or something.
Yeah, absolutely. As, we are absolutely so thankful for all of our board members that, and I had to sit on the Board of Zoning Appeals, so I understand the.
You've been there?
The, the lengthy period of time one can sit behind a dais reviewing things that make your eyes cross. We will absolutely want to find ways to appreciate our board members within the, the boundaries of the state comptroller's recommendations around things like that. We've had some challenges around purchasing food for board members and things like that, but I will absolutely go back and talk with our team and see what we can do.
Yeah, some cold drinks and some cheese and crackers in all seriousness, I think will just go a long way.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Thanks, guys.
Point well made. Councilwoman Hill. Councilwoman Coonrod, I see your light.
Thank you, Chair. Ronald, which, I just want to know which area would Eastdale and Brainerd? Are we grouped in with the Shallowfoot region or?
If I remember correctly, it's Eastdale, Brainerd, and just one other one in now, and maybe Cromwell. And if you look at that particular region, two of those community centers sit in District Five and one of those community centers sit in your district. And so we broke it down appropriately.
Okay. So you put us at a DSA bandage. No, just, I'll miss with you. Thank you.
No, no problem.
You good, Councilwoman? All right. Dr. Burz, is that you again?
Oh, yeah. The sports board.
So we have a sports authority board and then we have a new sports board.
Yeah, I, I will need to clarify with our economic development team if this is still something that will be ongoing, given the, the nature of the, the, the new sports, the City County Sports Authority. Obviously, right now, the current sports authority handles the stadium on Hawk Hill and I don't know that the sports authority has worked out its jurisdictional lines with how Hawk Hill and the others will be appointed.
So why, why are there two? I was led to believe that the one that existed now would be expanded. I'm kind of left hanging with the member that's thinking.
Yes, I think, given that there are two independent bodies now with two different jurisdictional sets of jurisdictional lines, for example, over the South Broad and the stadium, as well as now over Hawk Hill, they will have to likely, between the two, the two boards, decide how they want to merge. And I defer to the city attorney on exactly what the process for that will look like. But we have two. I like, I, I would anticipate that we will not have two for very long.
I'd love to know that since my appointee is wondering.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, however it goes, it goes.
It likely will, there will likely be two until 2025, given that the lookouts will still play at Hawk Hill up until that point, assuming you all decide to move forward with the stadium. And I, again, I, I want to defer to Jermaine maybe a little bit later on this.
Not a problem. Just if we could have some definitive answer. Because my appointee is thinking, what the heck? You know, what's going on?
I understand.
Yeah. Maybe a little smoother. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Burz.
You're going to need to have somebody around to be able to do a deed. That's the reason that the sports authority has the deed for the current location where they are. And if they stop being there at that location on Hawk Hill, then there has to be a deed to transfer the property.
Couldn't it be one group?
They're creating a new entity for bonds as well in this process, so.
I'll leave it up to you.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
All right. Any other questions? So a little bit of homework. I will respond on the election polling sites. If we need a runoff, and send that out in an email qualifying the answers with Mr. Allen. And I want to make sure before we adjourn for this afternoon that, okay, I see you, Councilwoman Coonrod. Madam Clerk, we do have on the 8-16, a workforce development presenter committee or written down. I want to make sure we, we covered that because that one somehow slipped through my notes and I want to make sure Councilwoman has what she needs. On that note, Councilwoman Coonrod?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to see if the council will be interested in just relooking at our city elections. Because when you think about other municipalities around us, their election cycles are, you know, on a general or during a presidential election. And we're, I mean, we're, you know, losing money, I think, how our election cycle is. I know previously we had a, when Henderson was the chairman, he created an ad hoc committee in which you, Ken and I sat on. And at that time, it was decided to be a no. But I'd like for us to really take a look at it again, as well as looking at, you know, staggering our election cycles.
Understood. We can put that on where our next election cycle is in 2025? So I think we definitely have time to think about that. Would you like to put that in as a, like a, when we're a little softer on our agenda? But go ahead and, would you like to see it listed?
Yeah, that's fine. I just, you know, wanted.
All right. We can list it as an item. I think that will remind us to circle back on it and also talk about, speaking of which, before, before we go, Councilman Henderson, do you have any objection to adding in the STVR onto our strategic planning, just as a reminder item? Do you have any objection to that? And the reason I'm asking is I know we've gotten an email and I'd forwarded to you and I started to remember that when I don't see it here, I think it's a good talking point if we could keep it out in the forefront. So Madam Clerk, if you don't mind, add in just STVR update, I think, to our strategic planning and keep that item. And if there's any updates, we can go ahead and refer to that line item. I think that would be helpful. Is there anything council needs to bring forward else for strategic planning this afternoon? We will, next round, this, move back to the conference room. And I think that we'll, we'll go ahead and plan on that. And if there's no other comments or questions for this session, I will end us until 3:30.
Oh, we got to act.